Twenty-four, with us this evening for our invocation is Father Morris from Saint Joe, Saint Lawrence and Saint Mary's Churches. And if you'll stand for our invocation, we will follow with the pledge of allegiance. Father Morrison.
As we gather ourselves in prayer, Heavenly Father, we ask you to bless this council. We ask you to bless us as we look forward to working for the future, dealing with the present, and learning from our past. Help us as we come together to build up your community, to help each of us to grow closer in love with one another and in fellowship with our neighbors. Keep us strong and help us as we move to the future through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Father Morris. I.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Proportals please.
Brown.
Here.
Larry.
Here.
Hany.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Bob.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Here.
Next in the meeting agenda packet is our regular council meeting minutes of April the eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Are there any errors, omissions, additions to those minutes? Chris, Hany.
Page two, second paragraph, about three or four sentences in. Mr. Davis said the city gave an official break in Texas for ten years to help develop. And on page four, top of the page, first sentence, another speak about the city. Big support of taxing sales. Now, while the city is, you know, all in favor of helping out any way we can, we do not get out tax abatements. That's on the Lawrence County Commissioner in Oliver's office. So just want to make that part of the amendments. And we appreciate Mr. Dr. Davis giving us credit for helping, but that is not one instance where we help in getting any tax abatements.
Got that. Yeah, meeting minutes, amendments, additions, omissions, errors. There are none other than Mr. Hany's. Those will stand approved. Next is audience participation. We have with us some invited guests this evening, and then we'll move on to the regular audience participation. To give us an engineering update and Ohio EPA, our very favorite thing to talk about, update, Kevin Wood and Randy Stolfer, Arcadis and James Kaysley are our county. If you all want to step, give us an update. I don't care who goes first. Let's talk to BPA.
Talk to BPA. Good evening. I've had the pleasure of meeting and working with many of you, but for those who have not, my name is James Kaysley. I'm an environmental partner at Keating Mutant Clinic and Law Firm in Cincinnati, Ohio. I've had the privilege of working with the city of Ironton for about seven years now. So I'll give a brief update on where we are relative to the various agencies. And then Randy and Kevin will give an update based on a recently completed report and there's some next steps. So since two thousand nine, the city of Ironton has been under a consent decree with three environmental agencies, the United States EPA, Ohio EPA, and the United States Department of Justice. The consent decree obligated the city to remove all combined sewer overflows referred to CSOs in its system by year two thousand twenty-six in order to meet its clean water obligations. The consent decree established five phases of work. The city undertook significant effort to complete phases one and two completely and to complete most of phase four. I'm sorry, phase three. Unfortunately, the completed phases of work were unsuccessful in terms of resolving certain CSOs. In fact, aspects of phase three resulted in various flood abasements, and that work had to be undone. I think many of you are familiar with that effort. Recognizing that the proposed path forward under consent decree was first not satisfying the objective of the decree, and second costing the city millions of dollars despite the lack of success, we proposed a modification of the consent decree under the DOJ's integrated plan approach. In consideration of the quest to modify the consent decree, the agencies had proposed a series of consent decree modified terms that will ensure that Ironton meets the Clean Water Act requirements and obligations. Ironton engaged Arcadis to complete a feasibility study, which it completed in two thousand twenty-one, and a dynamic collection system model. Again, Arcadis will explain at a high level the goals of that model and the completed report. The original schedule contemplated completion of the model by approximately February of two thousand twenty-four. Arcadis completed its report on time and we submitted to the agencies. Unfortunately, it took three additional months for the agency stakeholders to agree that the model report is in final form. However, fortunately, because of a conference call yesterday with all three agencies, we believe the report is now in final form. So Arcadis, KMK, and the city will now utilize the model report to assess project cost alternatives and cost estimates. It would have been premature to undertake that effort until we had a final model. There are just too many variables in that model, and if the agencies didn't agree and we undertook the time to figure out alternatives and costs, and they voiced issues with the model, we would have had to redo that work. So the next three months, Arcadis and KMK will assess alternatives and costs. We expect you to be able to present an alternative recommendation and costs at your meeting. There's one scheduled three months from today. So if possible, we'd like to get on that agenda. Again, we expect it to be in a position to share those costs and alternatives today. However, given the passage of time for the agency review, we are now only in a position to undertake the analysis. In terms of the next steps, we will submit those alternatives to the agencies, together with our recommended and preferred path forward. The agencies and I, on your behalf, will negotiate an amendment to consent decree, which will establish obligations under this new consent decree and new dates for completion of those tasks. So if there are any questions for me about procedure or process, I'd be happy to take them. Yes, sir.
So the three-month agency review from those different agencies, is that just standard bureaucracy? Was there any kind of, there wasn't any policy process procedure issue with what you submitted? Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, we submitted, I think, a very thorough and frankly, a really good report. And each agency is able to, if they want, engage their own environmental consultants. The agencies did do that. So it was very technical in nature. Their engineers were talking with Arcadis. They were aligning on just conceptual ideals, ideas in that model. We responded to a series of different questions. We've made some modifications to the report to address some concerns, but we're at a point where we feel good about the model and the agencies do as well. But the more bureaucratic and frankly, just delays in terms of there being three agency stakeholders, again, US EPA, Ohio EPA, and Department of Justice, lots of cooks in the kitchen for this one.
So for their part two, so if moving forward, if that happens, that won't put us in any kind of violation?
No, sir. Yeah, so we, I should have said this, I apologize. So under the original schedule, which really wasn't feasible, we would have completed phase five within two thousand twenty-six. So the city would currently be undertaking a project that would cost tens of millions of dollars and was not going to result in success under the decree. So going back a couple of years, when we identified this issue and brought to the agency's attention, we've been working collaboratively to extend dates. We put in a minor modification to the consent decree already because we are coming up on dates that we won't meet because we aren't undertaking phase four and phase five. So this passage of time is not going to result in any type of violations being assessed against the city, despite the fact that we would be technically missing dates under the original consent decree.
That's all. Thank you.
Hany.
As of current, bathroom project north, Ironton end project, have they given me any feedback on that? Has that resolved any issues that we may have had?
Yeah, so I think Arcadis can speak technically to that, sort of resolving some issues. The bathroom project is what we call sort of a short-term project that is in some ways distinct from the consent decree modification. That was a project that, you know, with some grant funds and some interest-free loan funds we're able to undertake now, is going to alleviate some of the issue. And it was, that project did factor into the modeling and the other approaches.
Thank you.
And these efforts, these sort of interim steps have been received favorably by the agencies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, Randy.
Yeah, so you guys have seen me many times. Randy Stoll in our office has spearheaded the effort for our work on the consent decree as well as the sewer model. So he's going to provide an update on those two items.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Randy Stoll, an engineer with Arcadis, IBI Group. James had talked about a model that we put together to help with the assessment of the recommendations for improvements to the system. I want to talk just a little bit about what that means. The model is a computer model that was put together with all of the collection lines. These are your gravity sewers, your pump stations, your force mains, manholes. So the model was put together to simulate how your collection system works. At the same time, we had flow meters out in the system and were measuring the actual flow rates, and we constructed the model using those flow rates as well as the storms that were captured during that time period. So plugged all that in, and that let us run the model and establish a baseline flow to assess what your normal flow is. But then, you know, more importantly, when it's raining, what happens and where the overflows occur and what, how to quantify those. So really, that was our big effort last year, was to get this model constructed. We put the report together that, you know, described our process to it. The agencies had an expert consultant on their side that was reviewing our work and provided input throughout the time period. We submitted that report in December, and then, you know, for the, for about the past three, four months, we've had some back and forth with them to validate the report. We seem to have answered all their questions, and it seems that we're now ready to move forward into the next phase of the project, which is plugging in the alternatives, run those through the model, see what the results are going to be, study those. And so between now and the next three months, we're going to run those alternatives. We're going to develop a memorandum that talks about the efficiencies of those alternatives. And really, there's two goals to this. One is to validate what our recommendations were from the original general plan, to confirm that it's good. And then also, it gives us an opportunity to fine-tune the design and not make it based on assumptions or theoretical numbers. Now that the model's in place, we can design based on real metrics within your system. So at the same time, during that three-month period, we're also going to be putting together what's called a financial capability assessment. So we'll look at costs, both capital cost, operation, maintenance costs for that alternative, and we'll assemble that. We have to present all that to the agencies. I believe there will probably be some comments and, you know, some question period back and forth by that time, but, you know, best guess on this, it may be resolved by Q four this year, as far as that whole back and forth process, but that's an educated guess. Are there questions about that to this point, as far as our action steps?
One of the big questions I have is with the sewer plant. I know some of those kind of go hand in hand as far as capacity and the stormwater and all of that. So how is that one to kind of marry into this analysis?
Yeah, so with the sewer plant, we did study that as part of the general plan. The computer model really models the collection system, but what it tells us is how much flow is going to be delivered to the, to the plant. We know that improvements will need to be made at the plant to increase capacity. We need to kind of take another look at it again, to compare outright new plant replacement versus certain components that would need, definitely need to be replaced, and then repairs or upgrades to the interior of the plant.
What's your timeline look with that process?
Yeah, so we're going to be doing that kind of simultaneously here over those, that three-month period.
Perry. So the, what period of time are the flow meters installed to retrieve the data for this? And my reason for asking is, were they, did they collect the data season by season so that there's an accurate reading, or was it during every rain, dry season? You know, I guess I just couldn't run it up.
Yeah, that's a good question. They were in twenty, were they out there in twenty-one?
In the summer, which was typically drier, but it rained a lot because I remember they made the comments on, well, it's been kind of out of the norm how much rain you receive at this time, but they've made us keep this flow monitor similar places since then.
So we continuously monitor if they get your overflows for three years.
I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't reading inaccurately if it was dry or inaccurately if it was during rainy or rainy season.
They put the flood ball during one of the portions of their flood meter study. So because I remember like thinking that we jinxed them, like a month later, they put the flood balls up. Hany.
Just hearing all the processes that's involved in this, any grant funding available out there for, I know there's a lot of grant funding for the waste of treatment plant, but for, you know, if we need new lines, if we need, you know, the repairs, there are any funds out there that we can go after and possibly, you know, start that process?
Yeah, there's, there are grant funds out there available, and we'll try to pursue as many of those as possible. Arcad was a group that was involved, has been off and on as well, and they're also aware of grant funding programs. So I think, you know, we'll, our goal is to find as much of that funding as possible for both the plant and collection system. Ohio EPA has a program where they offer principal forgiveness for, and one of the large scoring criteria points is for systems that are under EPA mandate and are addressing health and safety factors. And we check both of those boxes with this project. So, you know, that's certainly a program that we'll want to pursue. And I believe, was that the bathroom?
Yeah, that was a four million grant.
The bathroom project received a four million dollar grant through that program.
Thank you. So, well, Randy, well, your recommendation for the alternative models and financial assessment, all that stuff, all be part of this July twenty-fifth meeting that you guys want to come back?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Nick.
I just want to follow up. Was there any word on the Ohio Department of Development funding, or you know, that's going to be released?
Nobody has heard a peep. We all keep asking each other, nobody has heard anything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Others that would like to address the Ironton City Council, if you step to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to do so. John, you take the else.
I'm Martha Cranes. I was here last time over the Clinton Street incident. Here is a thing from Harbor Health with their address, which says Clinton Street on it. There is a Clinton Street sign still up there, and they went, he went up there and put the holes up. The, I talked to the people at the nursing home yesterday, and they told me that there is no way that a car truck can get down through there. The ambulances still can't get down through there. Every day that this goes by, those people are in more danger. There is an O'Hamner's place over there now. There's, they don't know what they're doing, half of them. They don't even know how to tie, put their shoes on, comb their hair, brush their teeth, wash their face, nothing else. How are they going to get them out of there if there's a fire or an emergency of some type?
Martha, I'll tell you, after the last city council meeting, at least five of us went down there in, in the rain, standing out there looking at those holes and that mess. And, and I told you then that I was committed to making sure that we got that right, and I'll tell you that now, that we're going to, we're going to get that right for those residents and for Harbor Health. And it, it may take us a little while, and you may not see us doing anything, but I promise you, we are having discussions, and some of those things we can't talk about in public because they require private acquisition.
I know.
So some of those things we can't talk about, but I promise you, we are doing the best we can to rush that along behind the scenes. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else want, you guys all want to?
I want to say, yeah. I'd say everybody up here did.
Hey, guys.
Hey.
Christina, Vine seventeen seventy, Centenary Road, Gallo Police. And I actually just kind of came to give you guys an update. I know that you all were working really diligently on trying to get some undesirable recovery homes up and moving out of the city, and I think your efforts on that were pretty successful, at least in recovery field. We've seen some really good success. So of course, I'm employed with Mended Reads, but as, on behalf of the Ironton Behavioral Health Coalition, I just want to kind of give you guys an update. We continue to meet monthly on the third Friday of the month. Many of those are Zoom now. We try to get together every once in a while in person, largely because the people at Lawrence County Recovery feed us really well if we do that. But our agencies did attend the Ohio Recovery Housing Conference last month, and I just brought some copies of the House Bill thirty-three related to recovery housing, just to kind of keep you guys updated. This is current. All recovery housing residences are supposed to be registered through Ohio Mental Health and Addiction Services. So my understanding is they are already doing some investigations on some agencies in our area that have not been compliant with that registration. So this would then also provide another outlet for either council members or residents who have concerns regarding homes being inappropriately operating in places that they should not be. And then as of January, all recovery homes actually have to be certified through Ohio Recovery Housing. So I just kind of wanted to give you guys an update because I know that you get, have gotten historically a lot of disgruntled calls about that, and this is something now that there is a statewide initiative. So I just brought some copies if, if you want those.
Christina, the Ohio Recovery Housing Certification, when does that have to be done?
The registration is active now, so we were actually supposed to be registered as of November last year. The certification is required January one of twenty-five. My understanding is that OMAAS has the ability to, if somebody is operating outside of this, set up essentially a cease of operations through the Ohio Attorney General. So like an agency like ours, I mean, that would, that would essentially put us out of business if we were not compliant with, with those mandates. So I think that this should solve any remaining issues that you guys may have.
This should have been done before.
It's like backwards. It's, yes, yeah, it is. It's backwards, but I just kind of wanted to update you guys on that, and that way, if you have concerned citizens, there's even resources for other community members, those kind of things. And then also, just a brief, I don't know if you guys are aware of the Lawrence County Bridge Day event coming up next month, the sixteenth and seventeenth. We actually have QRT teams throughout the state of Ohio that come down to Ironton to visit and see how we do things here. So it's kind of a big deal. Mended Reads is the Ironton headquarters for that. We have officers bridging with various treatment professionals, and anybody pulled over throughout the county that day is offered to go directly to treatment. There is also a resource fair at the South Point Walmart, so lots and lots of agencies and resources related to recovery. So it's kind of a cool event. We actually have two individuals from our county, Charlie Dempsey and Kathy Ross, who both actually sit on the state QRT team as well. But we've gotten some really good publicity, and we actually were, received a national award last year for our Bridge Day event. So just wanted to give you guys an update.
What was the date for that again?
The sixteenth and seventeenth of May.
Perry.
Christina, thank you. I know that you are one of the five, as I refer to you guys at the Coalition meets, and so I, for one, would like to say thank you for diligently attempting to meet police within your own industry. You guys have a representative here at every council meeting, so thank you for that. I just want to make sure that I'm clear. So OMAAS is who is putting this, the remainder of this calendar year is kind of the mourning year, right? And then in two thousand twenty-five is when they'll actually have tea?
Well, they are essentially required this year to even police that registration. So from my understanding, they are already looking at investigating some agencies who were not compliant with the registration. Next year is the required certification.
Cease of operations won't be until two thousand twenty-five, but they can get a friendly nudge from OMAAS starting now?
Yes.
Starting, okay. And can you tell me, does the Adams Board have, is that anything that, I mean, I know that's one of the governing bodies?
Yes, the Adams Board, which ours is located in Portsmouth, but is, serves our area, Sciota and Adams, and they are our primary contact for that. So that would be a more local contact if you had any concerns, particularly regarding registry and recovery homes. And one of the things in order to be certified as a recovery resident, you have to say that you are abiding by the appropriate zoning laws in the city or the municipality that you are residing in, so.
So if you have somebody at First and Main that is not in the designated zone?
Yeah.
Then these issues can be taken through the Adams Board?
I would say the Adams Board would be a great first contact.
Since it's local?
Since it's local, and then either they can, or you could kick it out to OMAAS if it's unable to be rectified through that channel.
And then the last thing, sorry.
Thank you.
Great. You said that there's something available to just areas of citizens. Is that a portal? Is that?
If you, if you visit the Ohio Recovery Housing website, they have resources for community members, for individuals in recovery, and for treatment providers. So they have links to all sorts of different, including the Ohio Revised Code associated with it. But yeah, they have a lot of different links for even community members and honestly, what you should be looking for in an appropriate recovery house.
Being your neighbor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Nick.
Does it, thank you for bringing this, I appreciate it. Is actual registry provided to the public, and is that on the Ohio Recovery Housing website?
The recovery, the registry, I have not seen published yet. The currently certified residences are public information. So I don't know if they plan to publish the registry, because essentially, the registry is no longer relevant next year because you have to be certified. So you can go on right now and see, like Lawrence County Recovery actually just completed their certification. We have not yet because we're working on accreditation right now. We will have it in place by then. So you can go on, and that's, that's public information. and that's, that's public information, anybody, to see the ones that are current in their certification, but I haven't seen the registry itself, now that may be something that the Adams Board would be able to tell you, um, who is registered in the area or not, I would say they would be the best contact for that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey.
I, uh, kinda wanna, we had a rape, well Craig said, this, this should have been done prior to us having to do what we did.
Yes.
Um, two other things, um, now, there are some things in here, but I think our, our ordinances that, that we passed in the past couple of years are a little bit more stringent than this, and just because you are, um, you are, I guess, are certified through the state, there are some other things that you have to do within the city, and just because you're registered through the state does not mean that you don't have to still register with the city.
Absolutely, this would just essentially say, act like, once we are certified, we would be, part of our certification with them would be saying that we are in good standing with the city of Ironton in terms of your requirements, so essentially, if you, you could say no for not, and now we're, we're in trouble, so it really just gives you a little more, um, broad means of kind of policing and ensuring, um, both for the community that are individuals in recovery, as well as community members not in recovery, that everybody's kind of getting along and doing the right things. Because there for a while, I mean, they're really, I mean, I, you guys know, because you were dealing with it, you know, there were just people kind of setting up and saying, hey, give me five hundred dollars a month, and you can live here and be sober, and people were just kind of running them up, and that was causing problems for, I don't know, I think, everybody. So.
Thank you, Christina.
Thanks, guys.
Dan Johnson, Auction Chief Police, just want to give you a quick update on the purchase of the Cruisers. Uh, we've settled on a statewide Ford as a vendor, and a portion of the purchase of the, of one Cruiser in particular, a K nine vehicle, would come from the opioid settlement fund, and that doesn't cover the entire price of that vehicle, but approximately eighty percent of it, and the rest will come from the amount we all budgeted already. Um, and once, I'll give you the exact figures by next council, so it'll be on the agenda, and you can do what you have to do. Okay, any questions?
That's Ford in total, right, three, three plus K nine, right?
And the current K nine vehicle will convert back into other use.
Do you have a question, Nate?
Um, so are they, are they the SUVs, I'm sorry, what?
Yes, SUVs.
Okay.
Yeah, four interceptors, SUV.
Last thing, we brought up the, the replacing, the, you know, now that marijuana is legal, we...
Yeah, that, yeah, our K nine, they haven't passed the, uh, legislation, legislation yet for the state, but eventually, you may know more about this than I do, uh, our current K nine dog will be no longer...
We wanted to preempt that, Dan, and we wanted to, like, get ahead of everybody else getting in line after that is passed. We wanted to do it before it's passed and go ahead and get a, a dog trained, um, so that we're at the front of the line, not the back of the line.
Yeah, because there's gonna be a mad rush to get dogs.
So, we're meeting with the Ohio Department of Public Safety on, uh, Tuesday, and we, we talked about that issue, and we talked about Ironton's dog, uh, and there is a path for, uh, the Ohio Department of Public Safety to train the dog for the cost of the dog.
Up to twenty thousand?
I think up to eighteen is what he told me.
Right.
Um, I told him that you, you all were interested, and we were, our, my office was interested in that, but, but the cost of that, so we, we, we're mad about that Tuesday. Hopefully, I don't know, Chief, what you need to do to get that in motion, but...
Well, I, I don't either until they pass the legislation, and I don't know that I can for that, as far as that goes.
Well, as long as, I mean, if you talk to Dennis with the Ohio Department of Public Safety, I think he can, you know, get, get you in motion. Maybe I'll reach out to Dave Mark on the prosecutor's office, although, because he was involved in that meeting.
Another thing, if we purchase one now, will he reimburse us for this amount?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll check on that, Dave.
And it's, I mean, I, I think, I, I speak for the majority, not everybody, but it's worth the investment regardless.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, um, so if, if we don't get reimbursed twenty thousand dollars to get a new drug dog, um, because we were first in line, but we have it, um, nineteen months before everybody else does, worth it.
I think, we'll, I'll look into that tomorrow. Anybody else?
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Chief.
Moving on to communications, um, we actually have one, Chris.
Well, I think everybody received this, um, in regards to the property located at Ada Ward or South Fourth, um, I guess I'll make a motion to go ahead and enter these into communications, and I've got some discussion after.
Jacob?
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Larry.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye. Mr. Hany?
Um, do you, Mayor, do you know the...
I said I haven't read it, but I already know what it, what it is.
Well, it is, um, now, I know that...
The yellow house?
That house was on the list for demo, correct?
And, and then it was purchased, and then, so they started rehabilitating it, and they had problems with, like, the grass and everything, like, we did, they fixed what we condemned it. This is vacant now.
So are they on vacant property, right?
I don't know, off the top of my head, but I would think they should be.
So they were on the demolition list, then it was purchased and some renovations were made?
Yeah, that was two years ago at least, it was actually ironically one of the recovery centers, because I remember it was purchased by, repotting in Jersey or something.
Okay, we'll get it, if you get another status update on that, will you let us know?
Yeah, so it's like, I didn't really, other than I know it's still vacant, I don't know if it's still condemned.
Okay.
But I'll read this, uh, and see what they...
Thank you. Reports are none, ordinances, we have, um, one, if the clerk could please give ordinance twenty-four fifteen, first reading by title only.
Restricting sex offenders and declaring emergency first reading.
Hany?
Make a motion to suspend rules to give, uh, ordinance twenty-four fifteen, second and third reading by title only.
Mr. Clear?
Make this, oh, second motion.
Was there discussion, or? No. Roll call, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Larry.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye. The rules have been suspended to give ordinance twenty-four fifteen, second and third reading by title only, if the clerk could please give ordinance twenty-four fifteen, second and third reading by title only.
Restricting sex offenders and declaring emergency second reading. Restricting sex offenders and declaring emergency third reading.
Bob?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-four fifteen.
Hany?
Um, just, I second, but I, a little bit of discussion prior to this, I, Nate, I know we talked about this when we first started. You good with everything on here, that we don't need any amendments or anything to it?
I'm good with it, I, I mean, I mean, the language restricts group housing for, for sex offender, you know, that's what I, that's probably what I was...
My goal. That was the goal, yeah, yeah, so, second.
Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Larry.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye. Ordinance twenty-four fifteen is adopted, the clerk could please give resolution twenty-four sixteen, reading by title only.
Requesting county, although there's a sort of wide SMA's property tax for the new, for renewal flood levy and declaring emergency.
Bob?
Make a motion that we, uh, pass resolution twenty-four sixteen.
Perry?
I'll second.
And this is renewal, not, this is a two mil, right, this is the renewal, not, not anything additional, a flood levy. This typically carries on the ballot, unlike all the other levies, and because people realize that protection for a flood really decreases our home insurance, and we had some o- other discussions in the last time about all the things that it does for us, so, um, I just wanted to make mention of that as part of the record, and for the, um, fifty-eight people that are signed up for our YouTube page, sure. Roll call, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Larry.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye. Resolution twenty-four sixteen passes, we need to get that to county, I'll do it as soon as possible, because we've got the second. Once they give us the estimate, and we've got to put the second resolution on, they have to give them that. And we have to have that, everything has to be done by, uh, July, uh, I'm sorry, August. So we have time, we just put it on.
Depending on how good their math is. Um, we are moving on to miscellaneous, and let me mention, um, on, on your desks at some point, um, and through your emails, you've had the Ohio Ethics Commission, Commission filing reminder, that's due by, um, Wednesday, May fifteenth, so make sure you do that, because it comes with it a, a hefty daily fine if you don't complete that, so, Nate?
Two items, uh, first, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, accept filing the part of the minutes, the March twenty, twenty-four financials.
Perry? Roll call, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Larry.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Second item, um, I'd like to talk about the stoplight at the, uh, Iron University. I have, I had a lot of feedback from residents, especially people in that town, because, uh, they really like the stop signs, um, and how that traffic flows, so I didn't know if we could... Chief?
I've not had any complaints about it, if anything, I've heard praise about stop signs.
So I, I kinda wanted to pass that along, I know I've gotten a lot of feedback from the community as far as liking the flow out is now.
I personally, I like it a lot.
Ironically, I've had the same discussion of the mayor, and I, I bet probably everybody else has too, because, uh, yeah. The, the longest, Mr. Casely, we al- we often joke at my house, we go to Reds games in Cincinnati, and the longest part of the trip's sitting at a red light at OU, so, anyway.
Those lights are brutal.
Yeah, anyway, so, um, he's, he's aware that there's some issues with yielding and, um, how many terms are available?
Yeah, you've got eight lanes turning one way or the other at one time.
I don't want to speak for you, but he's in the discussion with ODOT, because it's also one forty-one about roundabouts and, and stop signs, so... But do you have anything to add to that? Do you have anything to add to that?
No.
Okay. Everyone's aware of that one, thank you for bringing it up.
Uh, well, I've got a couple other things, I also got some comments about that, and I, and if, I always said that if it were to go back to stoplights, then it's ODOT's fault, so...
Yeah, I agree.
I do that, I'm, I'm, um, also, coming up, we've only got a couple more meetings prior to, uh, Memorial Day. Uh, Memorial Day weekend, have a lot of events, we do it right around here, uh, they do it right to honor, uh, you know, past veterans and current, uh, you know, military, uh, members. Uh, Memorial Day weekend, pickleball tournament registration should be open here soon for that, uh, at Iron, uh, Catholic Church is a charity fair zone to get, and, uh, once again, kings and queens of the courts are moving downtown, there are, there are maps available of the streets that'll be on, and the vendor locations and things like that, so I just want to remind everybody, a lot of events going on, uh, Memorial Day weekend, and Mayor, any, uh, updates on Brooklyn project?
Yeah, we put, um, we set, I think, two of the four containers today, the green down here, and the folks that are, like, the, people built them, showing us what to do, and that's, that's it all.
And you come and plan for a firework display that weekend?
Uh, the parade committee's fireworks.
They want to...
I, I, I think so. I'm not, maybe, I'll have to check.
They, they put permit in yet?
Yeah.
Good deal.
We got you three things, um, in the slide you spoke about, so then...
I, I, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll go last.
We're talking about the traffic plan at Iron University, and I agree, it'd be great, it was just, it was tough time. Um, is there any way to, and I know there's traffic studies that are necessary to, uh, to consider something like this, but has there been any discussion, consideration to, um, putting in a, um, full-fledged traffic lights, uh, or maybe just changing the timing of the traffic lights on Park Avenue, um, at Seventh and Park or Eighth and Park? I know when people are trying to get in and out of that armor complex, I'll spell it that, uh, they cannot. I mean, I, I literally watch people turn right, go up to the roundabout, just to come back south, you know, so, uh, just whatever can happen. Uh, roundabouts are fantastic, I love them, but people just can't get out of those areas in your area.
Yeah, I had this in conversation with Mr. Brown the other day, and I know that we, we, there's like future development projects where they're looking at, I think, South Eighth Street, right, Nate? Doing one there, um, because, yeah, it's a problem, especially because you've got five, fifth and sixth, kind of like the gun hunt, and just...
My understanding, they're trying to divert all that traffic to A, to get in and out of that area, and, and have something dedicated. I think there's, I know you're Catholic, you know, I think there's another dot study for that, is that correct? And pedestrian crossing.
Yeah, the pedestrian crossing.
And a light at A.
Yeah, I mean, that's a goal as part of some of the trail and shared use path projects, with a dedicated pedestrian crossing, because it is very dangerous.
Um, in reversal, we're speaking of Memorial Day, um, our meeting preceding Memorial Day is always the Monday before, so that reminder, that's May twentieth, Monday, May twentieth, rather than that Thursday, because that's Navy Night, um, here in Ironton. May the ninth is our next meeting, and, um, I should be here unless it rains on Wednesday, May the eighth, because, um, my, my senior baseball player at St. Joseph may have senior night the next, on the Thursday night, I will not miss that, but, um, if it does not rain, it'll be on Wednesday, May the eighth, and the third thing is, um, I need two minutes, Bob, for an executive session regarding real estate with, um, the finance director, mayor, solicitor, and counsel, with no action of the father. Sorry. Mr. Hany, thank you. Roll call, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Larry. Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye. Thank you all, we're dismissed.